We're on, we're on TV.
Hi, I'd like to welcome everyone to the January Market Town Council meeting and we will start as always with the.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God in liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item that we have on our agenda is for public comment and if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak, now I'll be. You can just state your name and address.
Hi, I am Brendan Barnes of eighty-two Ladies Drive. I just wanted to, I guess, pose a question to the council. I do not, I mean, I do not expect it to be answered tonight, but it would be nice if it would be. There's been a lot of commotion regarding Superintendent Gibbons hiring, or maybe not hiring, but a reassignment of Principal Lozoni into the position of school facilities manager or director, I cannot recall. However, it has been sort of clarified to us that this is in fact a town position. Now, we are just wondering, as far as we're concerned, this represents one of two things. Either it represents Superintendent Gibbons overstepping her boundaries in hiring to this position, or it represents a change in the duties of that position for it to be separated into its two component parts, town facilities manager and the school facilities manager. We're just looking to find out which one that is. That's it, thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak?
Good evening. Zachary Dumont, seven twenty-three Bennett Way, New Market, New Hampshire. I'd like to thank the town council for allowing me to speak here tonight, and I'd also like to take a moment to appreciate what it means to be able to stand before my colleagues and the citizens of New Market for whom I've had the pleasure to serve for nearly two years. I've come before you tonight to not only execute the duties entrusted to me by our town charter, but to take what I can only describe as a significant leap forward in my mission to keep New Hampshire a wholesome and welcoming community to live. For too long, New Hampshire has felt the effects of misrepresentation within our federal government. As legislators and executive agencies create new laws and regulations, so too does it affect our ability to seek out our nation's three most important rights. The right to life, the right to liberty, and the right to the pursuit of happiness. Our state has suffered through an opioid crisis, seen our men and women of uniform killed in foreign wars, and a growing dependence upon an unchecked federal debt. New Hampshire has been and always will be a place for new ideas to prosper, a home for new families looking for a place to grow, and an economy worth investing in. But for this to continue, we need leadership willing to advocate for our values, from those who are willing to speak up for the average Granite Stateer. And that is why I'm here tonight to announce that I, Zachary Stephen Dumont, am running for New Hampshire's first congressional district, to usher in a new era of representation for New Hampshire, and to be the leader that the citizens of CD One deserve. I thank you for your time and I yield back.
Thank you. And good luck. I said thank you and good luck.
Thank you. I didn't sign one of those. Oh, sorry.
So, seeing no other people at the podium, I'm going to close public comment at seven oh five. The next item that we have before us is for the council to consider acceptance of minutes, and we have minutes from December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, and I would accept the motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December eighteenth, twenty nineteen meeting.
Second.
Any discussion, any changes?
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Can I just ask you a quick question about the minutes?
Sure.
I was wondering if you had received any feedback from Patricia, because I know that I've tried to watch a few meetings recently, and, because she hasn't, she's not here, and so I don't know if she's struggled with the tape at all.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything. But, I mean, again, just remind people not to sit back, sit towards the mic, project your voices. Council's pretty good at it, but sometimes when people are talking, you start doing like I'm doing, not talking at the mic, but talking to each other. Just remember to talk to the mic.
And downstairs sometimes, if you think it's a little more challenging, so, great. The next item is the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few things not in my written report.
Oh, did we, did we call it all? We did.
Yes, yeah. Is, as everyone may be aware, that our parking experiment on Weaver's Row has stopped. I was approached by timber builders and they requested that we do not, we no longer do that. We received a number of complaints from the businesses in that area that they did not like the one-way. So we basically lost nine parking spaces due to that. I wish it was something different, but ultimately it's their, right, we have the right of way over their property. It's frustrating. It was really, really frustrating. Usually we work very well with timber builders, just sadly this time we did not. And I wish, hope we could find some other solution to it. Next item is, I think there's been, anybody been hearing from our neighbor in Newfields, there's some issues with their solid waste. First thing is, if there's no objection, I have an agreement, their, their contract to use our transfer station ran out on December thirty-first of last year. And we need to move on. It's the same deal, it's five years, they pay us beginning, first year they're going to pay us sixty-six hundred dollars and increases by either the CPI or five percent, whichever is less, for the next five years. What we've always done for them, is just accepting their, some of their waste. However, one thing that's going to, we're working on with them is, as you may have seen, that they're going to stop accepting recyclables in Newfields due to their cost. We, they, I met with Selectman Sanunu, who was representing the board. They asked if there's something we could help them with, and we've come to an agreement that what we'll do is residents in Newfields will be able to bring a traditional sized bin, however, the town of Newmarket will charge them five dollars to do that, to cover our costs. As everybody hears now, that recycling is now costing municipalities an exorbitant amount of money. We don't, we're not at the point yet to discuss stopping recycling, just because it's still the right thing to do. But, and they were asking for an alternative and that if we could provide it, and we determined right now probably five dollars a bin is the right price to charge them. What we're going to do is set up a punch card system, they can buy a punch, punch card for five, twenty-five dollars, so they'll have five visits on that card, so we don't have to accept, we don't accept cash at the transfer station. We're just writing that policy now and it should be in place shortly. The next item is in my written report, and the council received a memorandum from me last Friday as it regards to the facilities director position in town. There were some misinterpretations of, or actually I would say confusion, on what the position is and what's going on on the town side. First and foremost, the facilities director position for the town of Newmarket is vacant. We did not hire anybody else, we're advertising and moving forward with that. After discussions with the school district, they probably should have used different terminology for the position that they're going to be, they're going to have. However, that individual is not an employee of the town of Newmarket, until employee of the Newmarket School District. We've agreed to go forward to try and hire a full-time shared facilities director. That individual will be a town employee, we haven't even advertised or posted that yet. I met with the two chairs, the vice chair, the two vice chairs and the superintendent late Friday afternoon to discuss this and make sure that we're all on the same page. When I got like, when I saw the release on Thursday morning, I was confused with it myself, and when one of our employees was mentioned as being replaced by this other individual, and that is not the situation, that the town was not involved in that at all. And I stand by the memorandum that the council and the SAU got from me. The next item in my written report is that the wastewater department submitted, as you know, submitted an application with seventy-five thousand dollar loan grant to evaluate Newmarket's wastewater collection system. The department would have received a seventy-five thousand alone that would have given a hundred percent for loan forgiveness at the completion of the project. However, we were ranked at number eight on the project list, and we've been informed by DES that we only had enough funds to get to top seven. As such, that we, the proposed warrant article that we had has been withdrawn from the warrant, and we're not going to go forward with that this year. Another item that's not on my written report is that we received, the EPA issued a revised permit, nitrogen release permit for the wastewater plants around the Great Bay. We're, at the same time, our environmental legal counsel in December notified us of his retirement. So, we are working with the town of Exeter to secure new environmental legal counsel to review the permit. We, at this point, we don't believe it's in our favor. We just want to make sure some of the wording of that, and he's, they're reviewing that now, we'll have more information for the council once we do that. As you're aware, the presidential primary will be held February eleventh from seven AM to seven PM at the Newmarket Elementary School. We will need two counselors to be present at all times in a majority that evening to certify the vote. I'll be sending out the signup sheet shortly. Just to remind also, we're going to need individuals for the March town elections to certify the vote. And that next Wednesday, filing period begins for town council and all town offices. You can do that at the town clerk's office, and just to remind people that that's available, there's a list of the open offices online. And that's all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any, I don't know.
Where's the button?
Counselor Cast.
I just wanted to circle back just on a couple more clarifications from the administrator or the chair, because I think you were at the meeting with the school as well. So we're not, at this time, it's understood that we're not ending the relationship to share a facility.
We are not. We are continuing. But back in December when the facility director gave tenures resignation, we met with the chair and the superintendent, and they indicated at that point in time we were continuing with this relationship. We iterated that on Friday afternoon that we're continuing with this relationship. I have given a job description draft to the superintendent to review and to suggest any revisions to that. However, again, in accordance with this agreement, the appointing authority is the town. So I would come forward to the council with a nomination with my appointment, and you'd either approve or disapprove of my appointment.
And regarding that relationship, previously I think we actually had a formal agreement that it expired at the, near the end of the year, and that was why you were meeting at that time, correct? To?
Hmm, no.
No? Okay.
No. That agreement's still in place. The one that we, that we didn't, we agreed to end was the finance director.
I'm sorry, I did misunderstand that. Okay. That was why I needed you to ask the questions. Okay, great. So we do have, actually have a formal, formalization of the.
Oh yeah, there's a memorandum of understanding between the two entities.
And we met because the current, or, well, at the time, the current employee had given us benefits, so that was why we.
Thank you.
Counselor Dumont.
Yes, actually, can I scratch that? I think Gretchen answered it, or have my question answered. Thank you.
Of course. I'm seeing, oh, no, seeing no other comments. I have a bunch. Sorry. So, this is sort of a combination of from your report and from the department reports. So, first of all, I just wanted, there, we have a couple, a few long-term employees who are leaving, or, you know, relatively long-term. So Anna Bisciano and Andy Sinwald from, I hope I didn't totally learn the last names, from the RAC department, are both leaving, which was a coincidence that they were leaving at the same time. And Gary Davy, who works for the Department of Food Works, is moving after ten years of service to the town. So, good luck to all three of those employees, I just wanted to make mention of that. I also wanted to mention the wastewater treatment numbers that were posted in that part of the department report are incredible, and I think I've said it at different times over the course of the year, but they were, where the annual number was posted, and it represents an eighty-six percent reduction in the amount of nitrogen that Newmarket has put into Great Bay, so, or into the Lamprey. So, it's outstanding and really exciting. I know that that's just one piece of, and it's actually a fairly small piece, of the whole nitrogen load that is in our system, but, and, you know, some of the other things we'll address, you know, we have things like fertilizer, and that's where the MS four comes in. But, it's, I'm just so proud of our community for voting in favor of the wastewater treatment plant and really making a difference. So that's that. I wanted to just express my extreme disappointment at the parking situation. Every parking, I mean, we talk about parking, we've been talking about parking for as long as I've been on the council, and I think it's, I used those parking spaces on a regular basis, I'm always downtown, and it was, it's just disappointing that there were businesses in that area that didn't see the benefit, so I think that that's a shame. And who knows, maybe something can happen in the future. And then my other question was about the wastewater warrant article. So what will happen with that project? Like, will they, will there be other funds somehow, or no?
No, we're going to wait, we'll have to wait here.
Um, I was disappointed too. Yeah, so, I know, to be like eight, or, you know, they, they're only taking seven, that's.
Just jump in and say, I'm sure it wasn't for lack of trying, and excellent work, you know, but, it's like, oh, so close.
And just lastly with the recycling, I think that, I think it's very neighborly for us to allow, I know that we already have whether it's, is it an MOU or a contract?
Contract.
With Newfields, and we have for a number of years, I have friends who live in Newfields who are incredibly upset at the idea of having to put their cans and glass and cardboard in the trash, you know, they've recycled their entire lives, and they, it just seems crazy to start throwing things out. So, whether or not it gets utilized a lot, who knows, you know, because people obviously have to drive to the transfer station. So that'll be interesting, if maybe we can get some, some feedback about that, when it, you know, once it's put into place. And I think, I never used to go to the dump, or to the transfer station, it was not my job in my household. I still don't like to go, but I do because of the composting, and so I would say that my experience, I mean, I tend to know people or they know me, but I think that maybe it's some additional oversight on that, because it would probably be really easy to just drive them, dump your recyclables without, because we don't have stickers, you know, like, we're still very small-townish, and, I don't know, I think some sort of extra oversight would probably be helpful, maybe even if in Newfields people got stickers, I don't know what that would look like, so, it's my two cents. Counselor Cast. I put my glasses back on.
There were no other people who wanted to talk? No, we talked a lot, sorry. Are we on the department reports? Because I know we kind of.
Yeah, it's, mine's rolled in with that, so.
Well, I just wanted to note a couple things in the, in the police department. Just wanted to congratulate them on a couple of successful programs that seem to have gone really well. And also, we have a new officer who graduated from the police academy, Taylor Sheehan, Officer Tate Sheehan. So congrats to him and welcome to the force. I did have a question about the issue with Ford Motor Company being able to provide our new vehicles, that was a little concerning. I didn't know if there was an update or.
I haven't heard anything new, no.
How was it?
Seeing no other, we can move on, and so, committee reports. Do you have any committee reports? Counselor Finch.
Just a brief update from the Conservation Commission. We met last Thursday, and we decided to join up with pollinator pathways, which is basically just to kind of get out the word about how to be smart with how you manage your yard and stuff to get more pathways for bees and butterflies and birds to help pollinate, because obviously numbers of those types of species are dwindling, so we need more pollinators to do more work, so this started in Kingston. It's really just an awareness program, they're going to be hosting some events at the library, and our conservation mission is supporting, just promoting this idea of having ways to support pollinators in our city, so that's, that's pretty much it for conservation.
Counselor Dumont.
Yes, just a quick update. Budget committee met on Monday, we discussed the school board budget. It was recommended by the budget committee, a vote of nine to three, and we'll go forth to the voters. There are also, I think there were nine articles in total, oh, sorry, nine warrant articles in total that were going forward. That's all.
I think it was eight to three.
Eight to three?
My apologies. Yeah, there are eleven of us.
Thank you.
Counselor Cast.
The subcommittee from the planning board to work on the water resources chapter has got a meeting scheduled for the fifteenth at five PM to proceed with working on the chapter.
And appears to be it, so, we can move on to resolutions in the second reading, and the first resolution that we have is Resolution twenty nineteen twenty twenty dash eighteen, which is to allow sports betting in the town of Newmarket, and I would accept a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty nineteen twenty dash eighteen, operation of sports betting in the town of Newmarket.
Second.
Yes.
So this will actually be placed on the ballot, and it's a majority vote. You have to have a public hearing, not more than thirty, not less than fifteen days prior to the election, not prior to this vote to place it on there. So you'll be holding that public hearing sometime in February. This does not mean a sports betting facility be located in the town. They still need to apply with the lottery commission, and, because there's only ten site licenses being issued across the state for in-house sports betting. On December thirtieth, I believe that was the date, the state did activate their sports betting app, so there is sports betting going on in town. It's just on everyone's phone for people over the age of eighteen. That's it. So this has just given the people the opportunity to say yes, they, yes or no, will they allow it in Newmarket? But doesn't necessarily mean it will happen.
Thank you. Counselor Dumont.
Yes, I would just like to echo what the town administrator said. It's, it's nice that we're able to have us go to the voters of Newmarket. I think it's helpful when we have the choice to be able to decide how we want our community to operate. Personally speaking, I would hope that the voters pass this, it seems fairly non-harmful for our community. And it just opens up other potential avenues for, to help raise revenues, so, that's all.
Counselor Cast.
On the flip side, I just wanted to check, one, I understood from the last, some earlier discussion in prior meetings, that it's, since there's only ten facilities that are going to be granted this by the state, it's not really highly likely that Newmarket would be granted one? I mean, just, if you're going to play the odds, probably not. So, that led me to a follow-on question, which is when we put things on, on, on the ballot, is there a cost to the town to do each item?
No.
Okay, so it's.
It's minimal.
As far as that goes. Okay, so in that case, I agree with Counselor Dumont. Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Counselor Burns.
I just wanted to say that I think it's important that this does go out to the voters. Couple of years ago, I believe, we had Keno on the ballot, and the voters want these types of things on the ballot, and so I think it's important that we place it there.
Counselor Finch.
I would echo those same sentiments too, that there's plenty of stuff that a local body or the state can regulate, but I think to allow voters to have their say, I think, with Keno and with other things, I think it's reasonable to allow our voters to make decisions on certain items like this.
I have a procedural question.
Sure.
Why is it that we would have a public hearing after the?
State law.
Because it seems sort of silly, I mean, we're going to vote on it.
You're basically having a public hearing for the voters, not for, not for whether or not you place it on the ballot. It's more the public hearing for some, for them to get a chance to comment before deliberative session. And it's actually going to be after deliberative session, so it's a second, it's, it's not, it's not thirty days before deliberative session, it's thirty days before the vote. Fifteen to thirty days, so it's in February. Deliberative session is February first.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So you know their comments?
Counselor Finch.
Aye.
Counselor Sanders.
Aye.
Counselor Dumont.
Aye.
Counselor Kuiper.
Aye.
Counselor Cast.
Aye.
Counselor Burns.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay. Next, we have nominations and appointments, and the, just open it, sorry. The first that we have is for, it's a nomination to the Conservation Commission as an alternate, and that's Ellen Snyder. You know, Ellen's here in the audience, I don't know if you wanted to say anything, or?
You have to speak on mic.
I have a question. Hello, Ellen Snyder, twenty-sixth Johnson Drive. I applied to submit to be on the Conservation Commission, I do see that it expires. I do see that it expires twenty twenty, so do I reapply after March?
Yes, you're filling in a vacancy.
Okay, okay, so I'm doing it for a month, so happy to do that.
Yeah.
And I'll just say before we, um, call the roll that, um, we're really lucky to have Ellen Snyder applying for this position. Um, she's served on numerous boards, it says on the application, but numerous boards, including the Budget Committee, uh, the Conservation Commission, Open Space Commission, and the Planning Board. So, uh, uh, with that, if you want to call the roll, please.
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Sanders.
Aye.
Councillor Dumont.
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Um, and the next, um, application is for Michael Provo. And that is, uh, to the Ad Hoc Arts and Tourism Commission, and I would accept a motion, uh, to approve that application.
I'll make a motion to approve Michael Provo's application to, um, the Art and Tourism Committee.
Second.
And I was happy to see this. I was a little nervous when he resigned from the other commission and I didn't see him, actually, I didn't see the application. So, um, I don't see any other comments, so if you call the roll, please.
Councillor Finch.
Aye.
Councillor Sanders.
Aye.
Councillor Dumont.
Aye.
Councillor Kuiper.
Aye.
Councillor Cast.
Aye.
Councillor Burns.
Aye.
Councillor Weinstein.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
There are still more positions on the Arts and Tourism Commission and on the Riverfront Commission, so, or Committee.
Yes.
So, um, if people are interested, you could use the help. So, next we have, um, resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. And the first that I have is resolution twenty nineteen, twenty twenty dash nineteen, the McAllen Dam Construction Services. Whereas the taxpayers of the town of Newmarket approved a bond in March twenty nineteen for the abutments and outlet structure rehabilitation construction project for the McAllen Dam. And whereas GZA Geo Environmental, Inc., designed and engineered the McAllen Dam project with a request for proposals for construction services due on December sixth, twenty nineteen, with three submissions received and now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that, um, the Newmarket Town Council authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with some co-eco contracting LLC of Puberty Mass for construction services for the McAllen Dam project in the amount of one million, eight hundred thirty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars, with funding from the taxpayer-approved abutment and outlet structure rehabilitation bonded project. First reading, January fifteenth, twenty twenty. And the second item is ordinance number one, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and it's an ordinance amending chapter two of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, indemnifying local officials. The town of Newmarket ordains, one, the purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to indemnify town employees and officials pursuant to N H R S A thirty-one. And of the amendment, chapter two is hereby amended by adding the following article. Though you can't see it, the editor's note is, um, deleted items are struck through, items added are bold, italicized, and underlined. And, um, everything that I'm about to read is added. So it's Article eight, indemnification of town employees and officials. Section two dash, two eighteen, indemnification of town employees and officials. The town council affirms this adoption of RSA thirty-one colon, one oh five, and indemnifies and holds harmless pursuant to the statute any person employed by the town, any member or officer of its governing board, administrative staff, or agencies, including but not limited to town councillors and all other officers, officials, trustees, and members of all other boards, commissions, and advisory bodies created or existing pursuant to statute, charter, or general law authority from personal financial loss or expense, including all reasonable legal fees and costs arising out of any claim, demand, suit, or judgment by reason of negligence or other act resulting in accidental injury to a person or accidental damage to or destruction of property. If the indemnified person at the time of the accident resulting in injury, damage, or destruction was acting within the scope of his employment or office. And it, number three takes effect, this ordinance shall take effect after passage and publication of notices required by RSA forty-seven, colon, eighteen. First reading, January fifteenth, twenty twenty. And we will have-
A public hearing, because we refer to public hearing on the next meeting.
Um, councillor Dumont.
Yes, um, it was actually, so this, I was trying to get to you when we were going over the nominations and appointments.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Um, do we have a count of how many seats are left on those commissions?
Don't off the top of my head.
No problem.
I do wanna say that on the Arts Committee, I feel like we've only-
Only one other person, yeah.
Okay.
So we've got a little ways to go, and there were-
They're both small, they're right, three, really?
I think that one was bigger, wasn't it?
Seven. Seven.
Yeah, seven of them.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
So Mr. Post, he was on the Riverfront, but now, but he resigned from it, so there's one on that one.
Yeah.
That had three at large.
Yeah, three at large.
Three at large, yeah. Two more.
Um, and just a quick question about the McAllen Dam, um, and I know that we're gonna be talking about that, but can we get, even if it's just an executive summary of each of the bids? Because that's not, there's a list, but that's all.
Yep, we can give you a copy of the bids.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, councillor Sanders.
I just had a question with the seven members for the Arts and Tourism. Um, I know you had mentioned at the last meeting, Steve, that Amy would be a representation on that board, Amy from the rec center.
She's not on the board.
She's not on the, but she-
Employees cannot serve on boards.
Okay, but she will be attending the meetings and things, okay. I just want to clarify that that's not one of the seven.
No.
Okay. But mine is one of the seven.
You're correct, yes.
Okay. So we need four more people.
Um, and so the next item corresponds to town council.
I receive none.
Councillor Dumont.
Yes, so, um, I just wanted to touch, um, we had received a letter back on December twenty-sixth, um, from Stacy Mazur, uh, Five Church Street. Um, it was a letter regarding the McAllen Dam bidding process, uh, the fact that we had received bids that were over two million dollars. Uh, now we have a lower bid for, uh, about two hundred thousand underneath the, um, two million dollar cap. Um, should I read the full letter or?
Like, be fine, that's up to the council. It's not my call.
I have no objection.
Okay, um, well, I'll just, I'll, I'll make it quick. Uh, dear Chairwoman Weinstein and mounts, uh, and members of the Newmarket Town Council, after receiving no bids to its first request in the spring of twenty nineteen to repair the McAllen Dam, the town was put out a new request for bids in October. Per town report, the town has received three bids back, all of them over the two million dollar bonding authority. Also, per the report, the town will now try to lower the lowest bid number to meet the bond. The lowest is close to two hundred thousand dollars over the bond. I am curious to hear more about what each of the three bids proposed and what these companies speculated in their bids to account for their figures and their final price tag. Would also give a clearer view of what the actual costs to repair the dam will be. Our community was reassured at the town meeting that the two million dollar bond with a final price tag with interest of three million would be more suc- would be more than enough to cover repair and that all of it might not be used. Even if the town is successful in reducing the bid, what would be the taxpayer impact and plan if there are unexpected costs? What sort of outcome will the town end up with after repairing a dam through cost cutting? Is it going to result in constant repairs over the next fifty-plus years because it has been done with inferior materials? What will be cut or changed in the final bid to remove two hundred thousand dollars? I still question if asking the taxpayers to fund three million in repair is a decision that is fiscally and environmentally sound. What's the environmental impact after fifty-plus more years of impoundment? Only one thousand thirty-seven people voted to repair the dam in twenty nineteen out of seven thousand nine hundred eighty registered voters and out of around twenty-six hundred people that voted that day. The overwhelming support for repair isn't there. Studies show most people, after given all the facts, support removal. It's unfortunate that more wasn't done to address people's fears surrounding the removal of the McAllen Dam. We should not be repairing a head of tide dam. The negative environmental impacts of a head of tide dam are easily researched. Federal, state, and nonprofit funds exist to help with removal. It would be the cheaper option today and in the future to remove the McAllen Dam. Two recent success stories in the news, the Columbia Dam in New Jersey was removed for seven million dollars. The Bloody Dam in Maryland was removed for seventeen million. These were entirely paid for through outside funding. The environmental benefits at these locations are already being seen. I hope that the town council will fully discuss and present, and, uh, I'm sorry. I hope that the town council will fully discuss the present and future fiscal and environmental cost of repair at the next meeting, the full results of the bid process, and the negotiated cost-cutting done on the final bid. Thank you, Stacy Mazur, Five Church Street, apartment five.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, any closing com- closing comments by town councillors? Uh, councillor Finch.
Um, we have a date set for our third conversation with the council. It will be Monday, February twenty-fourth, at the library from six-thirty to seven-thirty P M. And we'll post more information and share that, um, more broadly, but that's twenty-fourth, uh, February fourth.
And is the plan for that to focus around town meeting?
Yes, yep.
Any other comments? Um, I just have one, and that is, um, to reiterate that the filing period for all town elected positions starts on the twenty-second of January. Um, it runs for ten days. And I definitely encourage people who are interested to file to run. Um, anyone over the age of eighteen, um, and a resident for, I believe it's six months.
Yep. Well, that's a change of recent, I thought it was a one year.
I feel like it's less than a year.
Okay, I'll have to double check.
So, a resident anyway.
Yeah.
And we'll get those details, but, um, uh, so, so there aren't a lot of requirements. Um, just a willingness to serve the community. I think that that's really the biggest, um, the biggest responsibility and the biggest requirement. So, um, councillor Dumont.
Bouncing off of councillor Weinstein's comments, we had two successful write-in campaigns last year after nobody petitioned to be on the Newmarket Town Council. I do believe there are three spots opening up this year, so there are opportunities out there to serve your community.
Yeah, there are open seats on every, on every board, and that's how, uh, I know there's been some talk, uh, just with some of the things happening in town. Um, that's how, every, every board has a rotating, um, group that is, that, so that, it's not a whole new board every, every year. Because that would be chaotic. Um, so not for the town, not for any of our boards, not for the town council, planning board, school board. Um, so it's really, it's always just, you know, two or three, sometimes one at a time. So there are three seats that will be open on the, on the council, um, and seats on every other board also, so. With that, seeing no other, um, uh, councillors to speak, I'll consider us adjourned.